Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes from the previous meeting? Any corrections or additions to that? If not, we'll take the motion to approve them.
Move to approve.
Lauren, second.
I'll say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I just got a, for tonight's agenda to add for the vote for rescinding the summons, number 5916614. And then going through this bill for the county. You guys, anybody have anything else to add? Take the motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll move to approve tonight's agenda.
Second?
Second.
Lauren, all those in favor? We'll go right into the reports then. City maintenance, what you got?
Um, I guess Lauren and I and Dennis Meyer have been working out at the dump majority of last week. Um, we got that sheet rock pile buried. And we have an extra little bit more room there. We're gonna keep that pile open, we're gonna put a hole open for more sheet rock. And Lauren, I did talk to that dump manager and we can put shingles and glass and sheet rock all in the same thing.
Probably can.
Yep.
Good.
So then we won't have to have another shingle hole for a while, hopefully.
Then I think we'll just finish up the shingle hole we had.
Yeah.
And then move over and start using that other hole.
Yep. And then today, Tom was bringing the tractor and I noticed there's a belt sign on the back to the tractor tires starting to leak. And I called the union and they're gonna get back some more for the model. On both sides, they're getting pretty rusted out. I mean, they're not completely rusted out, but the other side is.
Is this something Sherry can do up here or no?
I would say not on the back tires. You're gonna have to have a hoist of some kind of.
Okay.
Or, I don't think he would have the equipment. I don't, Co-op don't have the equipment to do that.
No.
So you'd have like a mobile, like a Butler mechanic come out of the crane and off his truck or?
He did it this last, or no, we had Carrington down here this last summer. Got a hole in the back tire and they put it too big.
Northwest tire.
Up too, I don't know, you can ditch it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
DFC does a lot of the tubes.
Yeah.
Didn't we just get rims on that?
The front.
Those are front rims.
I'm surprised.
And the back's got chloride in it and everything. The back tires aren't.
That's probably bad.
Back tires on the tractor aren't real good either. Should be able to probably get to this part or whatever. We'll see if they'll, maybe spring or whatever and see what they look like, so.
Here's a bill from Dennis Meyer for the excavator, $3,508.
Okay. That was for the dump, you said?
That was for the dump. Yeah, he dug. I suppose that hole was what? It was 40 feet wide and about 12 feet deep. And then about, what, 80 feet long?
Wow.
Yeah.
And that's just for that? About $30,000?
And then he moved all the sheet rock and everything in the hole and all that stuff?
No, he didn't. There was a lot, there was, there actually wasn't that much sheet rock. It was cement and old metal.
Toilet balls and sinks and a lot of porcelain. We pulled out a lot of the metal though. I'm kind of a little bit.
I think at 20 hours into that, that's too bad.
Yeah.
Now, now if he's got 20 hours, then that's crazy.
If I had a guess, I'd bet you we had a contractor, it'd have been 40, 50,000. Cause we hauled all the dirt out. We didn't stockpile of that, the dump. We hauled it up to the clay pile and then Zinkers wanted approach or Harry Kraus on his land. So we hauled quite a bit of dirt out there and built that approach with it.
Okay. And then I'm sure you might see on your bills that I ordered a few things for Ferguson, water, and the fire hydrant was over 5,000. And things have gone up a lot. Um, I've ordered parts to replace the guts in the fire hydrant since I've started to replace for at least one year. And for as hard as it is to find some of these parts, I just, I ordered enough for two hydrants to get fixed. And I just filled stuff that I'm waiting on yet, so. The county shop, they're, they're hooked up, but I think they're just waiting for the plumbing to get deep in. Kind of what happened there, I guess, I was told they were gonna bring in two and a quarter line into the building and then go from there to the hydrant. Well, they didn't, they brought in one inch. So we had to order different, well, I didn't, there was one part I couldn't, I didn't have to do for one inch, about three meter up. So I had to wait a little bit of time to wait for that to battle up. That's all.
And you lost the charge of this winter? You lost the charge of this one?
I think as soon as he gets it hooked up.
Oh, he's got water to the meter?
Yeah.
Now, for hit, for that one, all right, we already got trash. They're charging them for water, okay? And they're out of city limits. They have their own sewer, correct? They'll, yeah, they'll have their own sewer, correct?
Yep.
So do they get infrastructure fee? No? They'll just get water and trash, they're not, right?
I think so.
We don't do a sewer.
Is that gonna be a problem to separate then?
Oh, no, we have some that just do water.
Okay.
But I was asking, that one, does that one get infrastructure? But, cause it's not, not in city limits or no?
Does the guys across the street pay an infrastructure fee?
Infrastructure fee.
The guys across the street?
They're city limits.
For city limits, county.
What about higher, the higher complex up there? Do they pay infrastructure?
Yep.
They do?
They don't pay sewer though.
Yeah.
They pay, but they, do they, I don't think they, they don't pay mosquito either, do they? Do you do mosquito spray up there though?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so they get mosquito bill. So yeah, they get the infrastructure, that's why I'm asking you if pretty much that helps pay for all your.
In my opinion, then they should pay infrastructure. The only thing they wouldn't pay is the sewer.
Um, Tom was gonna bring up too, that a lot of these hunter houses, they don't have trash cans. They just, when they leave on a Saturday or Monday or Sunday, they just throw their bags out in the yard. Well, we got so many dogs and cats and everything, they're just going through it and it's just, it's spraying all over the place. I think we should make these hunter houses get garbage cans. Cause it's just, we're not gonna spend any more time than we have to picking up all the loose garbage laying all over the place. I mean, there's clean cases and whatnot, all the.
And as far as emptying them, you'd have to go in the alleys then too, cause they're not gonna be here on Thursday, you should bring them out to the curb.
They're, they're putting, they're putting them out on the curb on, on Saturdays and Sundays and then they sit on the curb till Thursday.
Okay.
Well, yeah, most of them put them out on the street.
Yeah, I mean, they could put their cans out. Actually, everybody should have to have garbage cans, not just the hunter houses. Most people dump, put their garbage out on Wednesday night or Thursday morning, some of them. But some of them put it out early and we get to them, there's so many cats in town and raccoons and squirrels and whatever, and the garbage is all over the place.
Well, put something with the next billings then. Be my opinion, right?
That's what I would say.
I guess it's gonna be up to them to figure.
You know, there's only, there's not a handful of them, I can just send them a letter.
Okay. Well, I'll get with these, you guys would know, I guess.
Because if I put it on the billing, that's for everybody and I don't think everybody needs to be reprimanded or not reprimanded. There's not as many, I can send them out a letter personally to them.
Kind of bad reminder for everybody in town to know that the garbage should be in a garbage can.
Right.
I agree with that too.
Okay, I didn't think of that one.
It's not, I mean, you're not reprimanding anybody, I sense.
No, no.
Just like a courtesy reminder.
And it really fine about that, if somebody actually has a garbage bag out on a Thursday morning and it's not ripped apart or anything, do we send them to jail? I mean, you know, that's ridiculous, yeah, yeah, exactly. I mean, let's not go overboard on it, yeah. They probably put it out Thursday morning. I've got a garbage bag and boxes that I put out Thursday morning. Some people do, on the east side of the home, cause we do that later in the day. A lot of people put it out, you know, we find people out there, as we're pulling up, they're walking out the door putting garbage out.
And then Sherry, if you could, put on the reminder with winter coming up that there's a, we have a clear path to their garbage.
I think I, clear path to the garbage?
Yeah.
Cause I think this time they got a clear path.
They climb over stone lanes, do you?
What do you mean? I didn't shovel out here tonight.
Well, what do you get?
Just give us your. No, that's, yeah, you shouldn't have to do that.
Anything else? Any guests? All right, we'll move on to the auditor.
The only thing I had undermined, that I gave all the new or, that new ordinance for everybody, to see if everybody liked it or not.
Do you guys have a chance to read through those?
This is our existing ordinance or?
No, that's one I found from another town. And y'all were trying to, we were trying to find you guys different ones to help to write one. And that's the one I just found, so I thought you might wanna look at that one, Alan's got a lot of good stuff.
You know, I think what we should do is sit down and go through, um, that, wherever I found it. We gotta be a little careful, cause someone like this is men of walking and their chapter numbers don't match, you know, like what we had in the book. In chapter 12, it's actually health in our book. And this is, they got chapter 12 as nuisance, one of the nuisance ordinances. So I think we have to, and I know when you text me that, um, whatever number that was, 12 dot 104, that's not even in our book. I don't know where it's at.
It's actually, um, 9.1410.
Okay. And chapter nine in this book is, I forget what it is, but it's not even in there.
This is a copy that was supposedly done on a rewrite from, um, 4chan of 2019 version. I don't know if that's your version that you got, but that's what this was.
See, that's the trouble, I, that was, when was it when we were gonna redo the ordinances?
We're running into trouble over here on Burke Street.
So I think we gotta compile all the sample ordinances together and get them into our book, so that that book has all the current ordinances in it.
I think we adopted that book, yes.
I was gonna say, we picked that up from the city's and adopted a lot of that. It may not be.
And I don't know.
Just before you came on.
Yes, we'll have to revise the numbers and everything on that then. Well, we'll have to get that from Riser then. I think he's got that on the hard disk somewhere.
Yeah.
I can, I can email it to you.
Get us copies of that and revise through it, cause we'll just, I mean, take a look at that one too, we can revise whatever we need on.
Yeah, I like.
It looks to me like it was written by an attorney, so.
Yeah.
A lot of it is word for word on this 12 0401, with the exception, we'll get here, this 04. Then it starts getting gray, or it's not in there.
I'll get Jared. Not sure we look at that before the next meeting.
When do you guys get this? Who gives this to you?
This is the first time seeing or hearing about it, anything.
Oh, I thought you.
Sherry brought it to me last night.
The ordinance? I thought I got, she gave, I thought she got your message. It's on your porch.
It's in much more shape for the agenda.
On your porch, lift up your box seat, you weren't home last night and I didn't hear everybody. I sent you a text and said, go out on your porch, lift up your gray seat, and I left it sitting right there for you.
I don't know, should we just form a committee of two or three guys?
We're gonna have to do it legally, like form a committee, cause we can't be a quorum when we do this.
Yeah.
We gotta do it, have a special meeting, I guess you'd say, or, or find somebody else to do it.
Would it be possible to contract with some attorney to go through and make sure everything's good for the ordinance?
Attorney? Was Hammer's interested in that?
Hammer's or Isaac? Isaac has like three guys working for him now.
Lauren, do you have an email address I can send it to you?
It's, um, well, let me get it.
Okay, well, it sounds like we've got some work to do then to.
But that one did have a lot of good stuff in it.
It did.
To change the number, you know, to change it right to our numbers, but it did cover a lot of them, what we're trying to accomplish. That's why I printed it all.
Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Nope, no.
Water, sewer, and policing, Joe, you got anything?
Um, here this goes again. I don't know if I'm playing dumb or stupid and you guys all know this, but if this is under my purview, I should know about this policing, and this is the first I've seen it. I should know about that water, and I don't know about the hydrants, he just doesn't. I don't know about any of that sewer, I don't know about any of that. What do I have? Why is this under my purview if I don't know anything about it?
So that you got people that come to you for?
That's what I would think, that's why it's under me. He's got lights and stuff, streetlights, library and stuff. I can go around town, look at the lights and know what's out or people, you know, if they call Sherry, Sherry calls him, cause she has lights and stuff. I, I don't know, maybe that's, I don't know.
I think means that your last meeting was your first official meeting, I think it's a transitional stage, but I think that's, what you're asking for isn't on.
Well, if it's my purview and you guys ask me now tonight, I'm going, oh, I don't know, I wouldn't. I know, that's not, that's not the way it goes.
I think the main reason is, Bogo was deputized, that's why we had him in charge of the policing, was the main thing, cause he was kinda talking with those guys more than, you know, so I think the other just falls under, but.
Well, that's fine.
For the most part, like yell ordering stuff, yes.
I haven't heard it at all.
That's the first time I kinda hear some of that stuff too, you know.
Okay, yeah, I bet, I bet.
Or maybe you have to get in touch with them, there's stuff you need before, you know, the meeting or whatever, but.
And a lot of times it crosses over, you know. We'll try to let you know, I guess, put that away.
There's a lot of stuff like this that comes up that I didn't know anything about too, so don't take it personally.
Um, no, I'm not, at all. I'm just saying it on purview, but I want to try the best I can.
I understand.
To be knowledgeable about this that's under me. Um, policing, Kyle, you got anything? Can I?
Hmm, it would be my reporting.
Nothing new, I guess, other than the citations and the ordinances and stuff that are getting enforced. My recommendation would be to have, you know, two or three of you guys sit down with some attorney and kinda go through the ordinance book and see if they would recommend any changes. I also heard that the minimum fines are supposed to be like a thousand dollars now, instead of 500, according to the state. Cause I don't know if that's true, but that's what I was told the other day from a couple city cows. So if that's true, then we have to increase our fines.
Now with the one over here, is she supposed to send you anything on their vehicles, insurance? And, cause she called here at the office and she sent me an email with, that they got them licensed?
She sent me new temp tags on the two that were.
What's the deal with, how come they don't get real tags?
Nah, we couldn't tell you. Maybe they don't have enough for their actual registration fee. I know it's cheaper to just do the 30-day temp tags.
So now that they went into the 30-day, all right, they just got it the day after you came. So what does that mean? All right, they don't have to go to court now, but then at the end of November, they're back in the same boat.
Yep.
Not having good times. So what do you do then? Cite them again?
You can still cite them again.
I didn't even know we had 30-day.
I suppose just like, by virtue, can you just keep doing that?
That's what they do, they keep getting.
There is a certain amount that you can do, I don't know if it's like three or six to let me do it. They did, they allowed more of it to go on during COVID, but now they're kinda catching up a thing and it's not as common. Just like we kinda gave people a break if it was a month or two out, but I mean, I think their last temp tags were from September.
Of what year?
Of this year.
I didn't know you could keep doing that, I guess. We'll just have to keep citing them and then.
Yep.
They'll have it done before we, that's why I don't play the system, I guess. Well, we'll just have to keep after them then. Was there anything else that they were cited for though?
No, because their stuff was off the sidewalk, um, that was the only one that I had for them. If we do adopt then the junk ordinance, then we get definitely cited for that. Now we put some pressure on to kinda clean up the mess. I think we give out seven or eight citations, I think, something like that.
So now, for his, I know it's under new business, but we're gonna vote to rescind the summons?
Yeah.
And then we just let Paul Hammers know that and he takes care of the rest? Is that correct?
So, I mean, Paul will still probably come down and it's more you guys can recommend that Paul dismiss the citations. Um, it has to kinda go that way, I think.
Okay.
Um, you guys, I think Isaac is still your prosecuting attorney, correct? So I would, I would talk to him too about the whole process, cause he'll be able to, um, talk to Paul and be able to legally dismiss the charges if it's been fixed.
Okay.
So that's, you'll have to go through Isaac to do that.
Okay.
Does that go on those people's record then? Whether they're dismissed or not?
Um, they kinda have to get filed through the court. So like, it's a little difficult because we don't have like a contract with the county court. It would make things a lot easier, since I turned the tickets and stuff into them, but right now I'm holding on to them and they'll actually go to Sherry. And then Sherry will give them to Hammers the day of court. So it's, it's a little bit more of a process, cause there's no, we don't have a clear court for the city. They would file all that stuff.
And when I talked to the judge, he said that on that Monday, whoever has their stuff done beforehand, the citation will go away and so will, didn't happen to be here. But if, if they haven't done what they're supposed to do, then they should show up here. And of course, he's gonna ask them why, and then he'll either tell them they have to pay that 500 or, you know, make a decision then. He said he'd make him a couple more days if they're really trying, if not, they're just gonna get fined and start towing.
And what day was that for?
Next Monday at 7:00 PM here.
All right, anything else? Jeff, you got anything?
No, the road's, uh, I think we're ready for winter. Get these cars off the road.
Now, how, do, does that one with the, on the trailer, does that one stay on the road too, over at Berice?
And one on the trailer.
There's a car on a trail, it's been there for a long time.
And the trailer is connected to another vehicle?
No, it's not, it looks like, he's gotta make it look like.
Oh, it's backed right up to it.
He's just backed right up to it. Cause with this heavy snow getting ready to come.
But it's on the street yet?
Mm-hmm. There, he did move one vehicle out of his driveway, that's it.
Does that not get?
He's still got one on the sidewalk in his driveway. Everybody took care of their stuff, but Berice.
Well, it sounds like on the 14th, we'll resolve that issue then?
Yeah, cause everybody else did what they needed to do to get theirs done and gone.
We'll ask it to be towed if it's, if that's, if we're able to do that.
Okay.
That's pretty good compliance.
Huh?
That wasn't bad compliance.
No, it wasn't.
Oh, what one?
Larry, guys? It's on the following street. No, Lauren, you got anything? Old business, we approved the final budget. Donovan Hofer sent $400 for landfill fees. Is there anything we needed to address this meeting on any of that? I wasn't here last night.
No.
Okay. All right, move on to new business. Otter Tail made a mistake, our contract is not up till next year, so he will not be here Discussed a letter, let people know that they were in compliance with their citations.
Um, Lauren was, was saying.
Duane had requested if we, and maybe we should just wait till we talk to Hammers? That if, you know, like he moved it down, so he's in compliance, that he'd like a letter stating that if when we rescind his summons, a letter stating that's what we did.
Are we gonna have to do that for all, all of the bill ordinance, anytime somebody gets one?
I don't see a problem doing that.
I could just see a scam, a generic letter at that point. Just saying, dear resident, you know, thank you for being in compliance, blah, blah, blah.
And just protecting themselves. I mean, I don't see a problem doing that.
It's actually kinda nice of the city to acknowledge that too.
It is.
Did you have, that's what you needed to know on that one?
Yeah, it was just, I was, more or less, I didn't know Duane was gonna be here and just forward it, his request. And I agree with you that, I think it would be just a generic letter, we could just have blanks and fill them in.
All right, then we got, uh, DeWalt's bill for the county. And that was, I don't remember, we were supposed to, being these not in city limits out for the county, shedding all the sewer work and, or, sorry, water, isn't that what it was for? Digging water and all that? If we were supposed to go from the curb stop and then they take the rest or what? So it's kind of a different situation there.
That was way back when Dean came in, didn't you? That's gotta be a few years ago. When they were first gonna put the water in, we discussed that.
With who?
Dean, his mayor. He came in and approached the council that time, when, before the state gave them that building, that the first time, and when we discussed that. And I thought we discussed we'd be responsible up to the, up to the curb stop.
I think, that was my understanding, we take it up to the curb stop.
Yeah, that's what I understood, and he agreed up there.
Include, including the curb stop. And then the customer has, it's his responsibility after that.
So this one, the city would pay?
Yeah, this is, that's what I think, that's the curb stop and everything.
But is that, I don't know if that is, but you're out of city limits there then?
Well, the curb stop's in city limits.
Oh, is it?
Yep.
Now, is there a meter hooked to that one?
Yeah, it's in County Shop.
County Shop.
See, and then they board underneath the road and that county.
Yeah, and I remember that time Dean was in, we talked about that.
That wall showed up the last time too.
And I think, uh, that's the one I remember, yeah. Well, this was way back before the state gave them that building and they were gonna do it back then.
Okay.
And I can't remember, that's been so long ago, I think maybe Richie was mayor or Jeff mayor at the time. I can't remember now.
They started about eight years ago talking about that.
Does that look right though, bill for just the water up to the curb stop then?
Yep.
Okay. I just think, should you get it back to me, Bill?
Yeah, but the response part, any leaks from the curb stop to the house and all that.
And the curb stop is what, 10, 12 feet from the main line?
And the curb stop is what, ten, twelve feet from the main line? So if there's a break in anything from underneath the highway to their shop, that's.
Where is the curb stop right now?
It's in Grant's yard, it's right in between.
Oh, it is, okay.
Evergreen and Zimmers Tree Rose.
You got it marked good, so we won't lose it, will you?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, Prairie Dog Fund, I think you had something there.
Yeah, I'm sure almost you guys, it's just a political ad by the, well, Herbal Lee, Brandon Burger and Grunich. And what it is, that Prairie Dog Fund, the legislature voted to distribute it some of the money. And, um, like Logan County will get seven hundred and forty-seven thousand. The cities, Napoy is a hundred and sixteen and Gacko is forty-three thousand, seven forty-five. Um, then the city scanned that newspaper, I don't know, you probably didn't get one yet. But it talks about it. And they're gonna, the state treasurer is going to distribute it in the early part of twenty twenty-four. Wait a minute, twenty twenty-three?
I was going to say, because we've already gotten Prairie Dog funding.
What is it here? Yeah, they did, they're dividing it. Towns over a thousand people are getting it in November of twenty twenty-two and then the remaining will be in the first quarter of twenty twenty-three. Towns under a thousand. So it's just, I didn't know who's aware of it or whatever.
And there's no stipulations on what it has to be spent on?
Well, I'm a little confused because as it goes on further, you have to, um, there's a report due November thirtieth of each even numbered year for the round of distribution. So I'm a little confused on that, how they're.
I would wager you can't have two thousand dollars for a girly show. You'd report it, you know, I, I would wager that to be for the city to a certain point. Like you said, that water project or a sewer fix or a whatever.
Didn't we use the last stuff for the, buying a bunch of those meters?
I think that was a different program, wasn't it?
It was, okay.
To Grant?
I thought two years ago we got it and we used it.
We didn't, we got it in there, we didn't have it.
But then we had some of those sewers.
I think it's probably been more than two years ago.
It has because I haven't, I haven't heard any Prairie Dog money yet.
We didn't get anything last year or anything.
Okay.
I would say just a report on everybody here to just like, you give your kid money and you want to know what he spends it on. You know, that's what they're doing. They're giving their kids money in the, in the cities.
Okay, what do you guys spend it on?
Well, I mean, in the future, near future, we're going to have to have some sort of tarring machine or tar buckets or something.
And that's, uh.
Our tar bucket.
We don't have it anymore.
Well, it's my understanding you're gonna, you got a bid on a machine, no?
Yeah, that was for three, four years ago. I'm sure they've gone up to say anything else. Well, I mean, I can get another quote and.
Look at something this spring, maybe.
Right.
Well, you could do Prairie Dog money on that, couldn't you?
Oh, yeah.
I believe, because it just, it talks about infrastructure. Do help with infrastructure costs.
Then we talked about the sentencing at the tower instead of down at the home post.
I thought we already approved that with that other funding.
Well, I thought we were going to use that all in two years.
And I got that estimate dated, dated back to February of twenty-two from Sweeney for ninety-one hundred for a control panel up here. And, um, it would wirelessly communicate with the pumps down there.
Yeah. And we did vote on that one?
Yeah, we talked about it here, what, about three months ago?
I think you tabled it for now.
Oh, we did, okay.
You know, the only thing that worries me a little, we have no way of knowing what that level in that tower is. And we're heading into the winter again. And usually you should run it down lower in the wintertime. And the pumps kick in more often to help keep it from freezing or forming so much ice.
And this would tell you where it's at?
This, and if anybody's interested in seeing what that panel would look like, Streeter, and theirs is a little more complicated because they have a treatment plant hooked in with the system, we don't have that. But there's, there's a graph on that screen. It's a picture of the bowl of the tower and it shows you exactly where that level was at. And if he wants to lower it, he just more or less pushes the down button, it automatically lowers it.
Before it starts to refill?
Yeah. Yeah, in the wintertime he lowers it and in the summertime, I think he puts it up to maybe eighty percent, somewhere in there.
So you're saying we should have that sooner than later?
That's what I'm saying.
That's what, yeah.
Because we've had a lot of issues with that VFD down there, that thing will ramp and I don't know why it's doing it. We had it when we first put them in. It works beautiful, but there again, we didn't know what the level was exactly. We were kind of guessing. But the minute we start adjusting on it, then it gets all screwy.
I'm sure there's logic in that, that new board would probably be able to do all that stuff automatically if we ask it to do it too. You know, if, if you wanted to run that lower, I'm sure there's got to be logic in that board.
In which board?
In the, in that, that, that computer, you're talking about that display.
Yeah.
I mean, there's going to be options to, to manage that a lot easier than what we have now, which we don't have yet.
Yeah, we know we have. Ardell sends me up there and I'll check what the level was.
I'm not doing that.
No, I mean.
For ninety-two hundred dollars, you can crawl a lot, Tom.
No, I, I would say if, if sooner than later.
And like I said, this is back in February, I could call.
If we get a good quote and bring it to the next meeting, because I think it's something that we've talked about a while ago.
I think we need to get this done, especially if it's not been done by now. I thought that was something that we talked about a while ago.
I think we kind of held off, we didn't know, you know.
You didn't make a final decision.
Well, we had the meters, I know we had the meters and we, do we have any money left over on the meters or no?
We have.
You got ninety-two hundred dollars?
We just pocketed thirty-two thousand to hold off for that other funding money that I was thinking of.
I think we need to move forward with that.
Did you save that estimate from Dakota Pump or save that water tower freezes one time?
It's not worth it. Ninety-two hundred dollars, it might freeze that tower.
And it started working and putting that in and stuff, the colder, it's going to cost more time and it'll be costing us more to put that in if the colder it gets in the middle of the winter. I guess, four hours, unless it gives us a straight bid. Unless it gives us a straight bid and that's what it is, then they can work the longer they want, but colder usually transfers a lot when you work on water. As a well-drink digger would know.
That was one thing I thought maybe, but you know, like I said, and maybe I should call that lady, her number's here. As far as if we spent that money or nine thousand. And if we have to do that report, can we, would it be approved on that report if they send us the money and?
How far out are they?
Say March.
Right, how far out?
Grants aren't that way. You can't spend the money until you have it.
Yep.
I know that.
This is what Dakota Pump control. And I don't know if it's what's different on it compared to what Sweeney's got. If there's more to it.
Well, this one's for sixteen fighters.
And I'm not saying we have to go with Sweeney, but I will say that's working with them. And the Streeter Water Supply, boy, they were really good, you know, I'd call them. Because when I got there, I mean, it's a, computer is what it is.
Oh, yeah.
Plus a whole host of relays.
Of course it is.
And they would pull the drawing up and we, most of the time we fixed it right on the phone. It was either, he could tell me exactly which relay it was, he had me take the voltage readings. And he kept walking me through it and he'd say, well, it's that relay. We'll send it to you. And a lot of them are just normal eight pin or twelve pin relay. So.
This was in February, that one might have went up also.
I'm afraid.
That's what Streeter is.
And there is one catch. And I think it's, has to be, there's a web or a cellular service fee of forty-five bucks about a month.
This one's got it for eleven hundred and twenty dollars a year, so there must be a kind of the same thing going on there. And this one, this one is too, I see. Service fee, yeah, so I'm guessing it's, okay.
And I think the way they're set up, then like, Bill would get the message on his phone. If there's a problem, if that tower level drops to the safety standpoint.
And Joe, he needs it on his team.
There's so many things that come into play that, you know, you've got battery backup. You know, is this included in that, you know? Because, you know, power outages and everything that was susceptible out here.
Or here, I'm just letting you know through.
Did Sweeney, did they come down and take pictures of what we got or anything like that, you know?
He, he had only equipment down there back when it was wells. That was all Sweeney put in.
It's included in this one here.
And he kind of went off of that drawing. And I told him, well, now rural water, we're not using their panels. You know, rural had their own. And he was familiar with exactly what's there, the way he made it summon. He said, we don't even, and really now we're not tied into the rural panel at all. So.
Okay.
And what gets confusing, like Streeter, when I mentioned the treatment plant, before those wells can start, it's got to go through a backwash cycle. So those, that panel has to give it the backwash cycle and then it starts the well out there. And then when the well shuts down, then it goes through a cycle again to clean the filters and. It's a lot more complicated. This one wouldn't be, it just either pump or don't pump.
Right, okay. Yeah, I guess if you know who to talk to and get a new bid for.
I'll give them a call then.
And I'd say since you've worked with them and they're, you know, good to work with, right? I don't know if they work on the swing.
And like Bills work with Dakota Pump, but they're out of water town, right?
Yeah, Dakota Pump is out of water town, but this, it would be a different company. I think they're out of, you know, the, the computer system and everything is different. Georgia, did you say?
That's on the card.
Yeah.
Anything else on that? Need to approve a permit for Gordon Heller for remodeling for kitchen and bathroom.
I'll motion.
Your second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, we're not sure at this time if we need it, but, um, since Dewey's in compliance, a vote for rescinding summons number five nine one six six one four. And then we'll also talk to Isaac and make sure we get that done right.
I'm moved to rescind it.
I'll say it.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, if you guys get a chance to look at the bills. Let's see what's on there, I guess.
No, nothing that stood out. Dennis Meyer, you said that, so there's three thousand, you've got enough, where's the other seventeen hundred?
This, this is the bills you're seeing one here for Dennis Meyer was down at the sewer and up at this county shop. That bill he just gave is totally different. Nope. He just, I haven't even seen it yet.
Okay.
So those were the sewer, the biggest one, the four thousand one was the sewer down there.
Wouldn't we replace that range, Colbert?
Any questions on any of that? If not, take a motion to approve them.
Move to approve.
Lauren?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anything that I missed, we're good. Date and time of next meeting, December fifth, twenty twenty-two, does that work for everyone? Do you see a problem there?
I didn't write seven P M on that.
I'm going to be here, but go ahead. We're going to be in Hawaii.
Hey, no.
Oh, it's a knock.
Go ahead, you.
Uh, you'll have, let Bill know and Sweeney then and Joe.
I'll work with Bill on it.
Okay. Sounds good then.
Before we leave today, you and I need to share numbers.
Oh, okay.
So Dewey's in contact with me under the street ordinance and some of the issues, but.
You're right about the, as far as the policing. If I add your number, I'll call you if there's something with Curtis again. That would be, I would appreciate it. And I got to look in my plastic bench on the deck a little bit more.
I love your text message.
I did, you can see it.
Motion to adjourn at seven fifty.
I'm with you.
Your second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to look at my phone and see if I get seven.